We do, don't we?
Let's see here.
So you had a good trip?
I did. I wish more of my fellow board members would've been there with me.
I did, I had a good visit with Justin Ickman. He's the board president of Fayetteville. So, we had a good visit and we're probably gonna wait lunch, because he can't really talk to his board. He's like, I'd have sounded bored and...
Everybody good?
They're doing alright.
Ready?
Good evening.
Maybe get your gavel.
Good evening, everyone. What a nice crowd we have here tonight on a beautiful, cool April evening in Springdale, Arkansas. Welcome to the April School Board meeting. Board, you've had the agenda for the meeting tonight. Any questions, comments, or changes? Dr. Rollins, any changes?
Mr. President, I would like to hold on just a couple of items. Our students that we really want to bring in front of the board, in front of the community, and recognize are traveling for school-related purposes. So if we could go to page one, under this first section, item C, we will hold on that until our next meeting. And then if you turn to the second page, if you see the items four, five, and six, our DECA students are also out of the city this evening, so we'll hold on item five. Other than those two items, the agenda would stand as presented.
Any other adjustments?
I make a motion, we accept the agenda as amended.
A motion by Mr. Luttrell, a second by Mr. Dotson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We've also had the minutes of the previous meeting. You've had time to review those. Board, are there any questions, comments, or concerns about the previous month's meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
A motion by Mr. Hutchinson, a second by Mrs. Cook. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, audience, this is the time where we have reserved for patron comments, concerns, questions. Just understand, if you have a concern for the school board or the school district, we cannot take any action at this time, but we would love to hear anyone's comments. Just tell us who you are and address the board.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Rollins, Ms. Cynthia. For the benefit of the audience, my name is Jefferson Miller, and my students at the University of Arkansas call me Dr. Miller, but I go by Jeff. You guys can call me Jeff. I've enjoyed getting to know each of you over the past five or six months, attending these board meetings, and I want to take the opportunity to officially introduce myself as a candidate for Zone Two in our school district. I've lived in Springdale for 17 years. That still makes me an outsider to some of you, but I'm not. I promise you, I've been very involved. I have two children, both 10th graders at Harbor High School. They started in this system at Tyson Elementary and Hunt Elementary, and went up through Hellstern and Central Junior High School, and now Harbor High School as 10th graders. They're excellent leaders, they are excellent students, and the credit for some of that, a lot of that goes to the teachers and the programs and the administrators in our district. So thank you for that. Looking forward, I hope, to be a part of that someday. I have been active in my community over those past 17 years. I've lived here, been involved as a watchdog dad at our elementary schools. I have been a guest speaker in some of my students', some of my children's classes. I've been involved in the community. I've coached local Kiwanis baseball and USSA baseball teams and basketball teams. I coached the 7th grade basketball team at Hellstern Middle School in the year before we hired middle school 7th grade coaches. I am a member at the First United Methodist Church, and I'm a member of the Youth Council there, still involved in helping students. I'm also on the church council there. I was once the POA president in the Saddle Brook addition when I lived in Johnson, and was on the Planning Commission there in Johnson for a couple of years. I serve on the UA Wesley Advisory Board, and also on the National Board of Directors for OneEgg.org, which is a worldwide organization that feeds eggs to children in developing countries. I have a strong background in education, have a degree in English, a bachelor's degree in English, and a master's degree in English. Also have a PhD in agricultural education. I've done some research and do some teaching related to experiential learning, and I'm really interested in career and technical education, and connected with that through our agricultural education program at the U of A. I was raised by a family of educators. My mother and father were both teachers, their parents were teachers. I have a twin brother in the Kansas City area, also a teacher and school administrator, and it has been a part of my upbringing and my culture to be around education. So that's probably the main reason I feel called, in addition to the fact that I think I'm personally a good fit. I am friends with many of you, and I've been encouraged by some of you to run, by some people I really respect a lot, and I appreciate that. And I think that this is one of the best ways I can communicate with you all, with our public, and be involved in our community. So I hope I get the opportunity. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Are your children twins?
They are not. They are stepbrother and sister, and we've been together for 11 years, and they are practically blood brothers and sisters. Okay, thank you for having me.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Nick Emerson, and I, along with Mr. Miller, have put my name in as the Zone Two seat for the Springdale School Board, which I'm very excited about. It was good to actually meet Mr. Miller tonight, put a name with a face, so I'm glad that that worked out. But I just wanted to introduce myself. It feels a little weird that you guys are the ones that I should be talking to, too, but Nick Emerson, I've lived in Springdale, I'm 33. I've lived here my entire life. Been in Springdale Public Schools since first grade, graduated from Springdale High School in 2003, where I played baseball and basketball. My wife's a teacher in Springdale. My mother-in-law is a principal in Springdale. Father-in-law's a teacher in Springdale, sister-in-law's a teacher in Springdale. Mother is a teacher in Springdale for 25 years. So Springdale Public Schools runs very, very deep within me, and just the pride and the tradition of the Springdale Schools is what makes me want to be a part of the school board, and to grow and to continue what's been in place long before I started school in Springdale Schools. I'm very, very excited about it. A little bit about me, I'm involved in the Springdale Chamber of Commerce, I'm an ambassador for the Chamber of Commerce. I'm about to wrap up next month, graduate from the Leadership Springdale Class, which has been an awesome experience. Last month was our Education Day, where we got to tour with Dr. Rollins, SOI, and Springdale High School, and NTI, and it was awesome to see what all is going on, and how much things have changed just in the last 15 years since I was at Springdale High. So that's been an awesome experience. I have three children, I have a seven-year-old that's a first grader at Shaw, which is awesome that tonight is Shaw night. I have a pre-care at Shaw, and then I have a little girl that's two. But I'm a deacon at the Robinson Avenue Church of Christ over the youth group. Kids and youth are my passion, and what I love to do, and what I love to be involved in. So I just wanted to introduce myself. I live in the kind of the Elm Springs area, off of Elm Springs Road in Camelot. So Zone Two was a good fit for me, obviously, and I'm just excited for the opportunity and the chance to get to know you guys more, and hopefully serve alongside you, and do whatever it is I can do to help Springdale Schools continue to go down the path they've been on for a long, long time. So if you have any questions for me, I can answer those. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, both of y'all. With the comments, I'll turn it over to Dr. Rollins.
Mr. President, I'd like to invite our representative from the Archer Learning Center to come forward. This is Mr. Kevin Gutierrez. Kevin, we're glad to have you this evening. Kevin's gonna lead us in the pledge, and then I'll invite him to stay just a moment. I'll introduce him to the board.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to new republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Kevin, we're very glad to have you here this evening. I see your assistant principal is standing there with you. Dr. Davis, we're very glad to have you as well. And I believe we have one of his teachers here with us. Would you like to go up and stand with him? We'd love to have you do that. Kevin is a senior at the Archer Learning Center, and he's doing great work there. His parents are Marita Batris and Ronaldo Gutierrez. Kevin's been a student in the Springdale School District since the first grade. He's a member of the Men of Honor. And Kevin, when we work through this and give you an opportunity to speak, tell us more about that Men of Honor group, if you will. And then, you're a member of the Career Badges Program. That's a new term for perhaps the board, and so we'd be interested in you sharing your comments about both those organizations. He's a member of the Archer Chronicles News Staff, he's a member of the Fitness Club. In the fall of 2017, Kevin volunteered with Tacos for Life, packing hundreds of meals for families around the world. He also worked to build the Archer's Little Free Pantry that was dedicated in December of this year. He has an internship with a milestone construction company, planning and building the new Archer Pavilion. He also plays soccer. He plans to pursue an apprenticeship with Multicraft, and study at Northwest Arkansas Community College to become an electrician. Ladies and gentlemen, this is one of the fine young men in our school district. We're very glad to have you with us, Kevin. Welcome him. Would you do that?
So, hello. Thank you for having me. I really enjoyed being a student at Archer this year. I spent a lot of time as a student in Springdale, but the school means the most to me, as it gave me a second chance. Archer also gives me a lot of first chance as well. Like, last weekend when we went camping for the Men of Honor, we went to the Ozark National Forest. I've worked with my teacher and counselor to, for my next step, as the NWHAC, to become an electrician. I've always wanted to become an electrician ever since we went to the field trip to Multicraft. It really caught my attention. I've also appreciate all the opportunities that Springdale has given me, and thank you.
Can you start by talking with us about the Men of Honor's program? Let everybody understand the great work that that group does at the school.
So, the Men of Honor, what it is, it's a selected group that is chosen by teachers and staff members over attendance, leadership abilities, and also absences. And then what we've done is, we usually help out the community as much as we can. Like he said before, we've built the pantry that's there. It's on the Emma Street, right beside the park, where we also put food, like canned food, for the community to get.
Tell me about the camping trip.
The camping trip? Well, we went Friday, and we also camped there till Saturday, and we left around like 5:00. But it was actually really freezing there.
Was it raining?
Yes, it was rainy. And they were asleep on the tents whenever we woke up that morning.
That made you a real Man of Honor, didn't it?
Yes.
That probably helps his role in the Fitness Club, too.
Any other questions?
This Career Badges Program is really fascinating. How's that work?
So the Career Badge Program, what it is, it's a group that we have, that we're starting this year, right? And to get that career badge, you have to have great, like I said, good attendance, good grades, and you have to be selected as well. And then, what it does is, it helps students for the future. So it's like a combination between NWHAC, like, as I said, like apprenticeships for Multicrafts, which we have, and Multicraft, it's like a partnership that we have with them. So, once you get that badge program, it guarantees you an interview with them, so that way it helps you move on.
Well, I was really excited to hear about Archer's Chronicles Newsletter, and you're a member or part of that?
Yes.
Do you want to share anything about that? I'm just new this year, isn't it?
Yes. And what that is, so what we do is, we make news for the school, so that everyone knows what's going on, like catching up with new stuff that we have, stuff that you need to be informed about, like what we're having, the prom that we're having, that we're having there, and that's just making it on there, and it's just showing everyone what's new, and just something to look forward to.
That's great.
So you did a really great job telling us about yourself. You need to be really proud of the way you're speaking to us. I get nervous talking to a crowd of people, and I've been wearing this a long time, so you need to take away that when you leave here tonight. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Really proud of you. Successful.
Thank you.
Are your parents here with you tonight, or?
Just my brother's.
Where's your brother?
Wait, there he is. There he is. Brother, hug you. Thanks, Kevin. Mr. President, if I could ask Dr. Dotson to come down, and we'll begin our presentations this evening. Very special recognitions coming forward from this great school. Thanks for your leadership, Dr. Dotson.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Rollins, and to our amazing school board for another opportunity to come before you today and tell you about our celebration. On March 29th, we were honored to be National Schools to Watch, and our school is now Diamond School. We'll show you our award. This is Isaiah tonight that's showing you our banner that'll be hung in our school, and so all of our middle schools will now have this, and we were distinguished with a nice award. So for three years, we will be distinguished as a National Schools to Watch, and I have a couple of our leadership members that were here tonight. Dr. Rollins came and spoke at our celebration, and Dr. Charles Green and Shane Taylor came as executive directors from Middle Schools to Watch. It was a really nice celebration for our kids, and they enjoyed it. And thank you for the board members like Kathy who was able to come and be there for us. I really appreciate that. Always, it's such an honor to have you all in our building. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dotson. Thank you, team. The board, I know you're very aware of this, but perhaps there are members in the audience who are not. We have four middle schools in our district, and each of them have received this national award of distinction, and we're very, very happy that that's happened. Thank you again, Martha. Okay, can I ask Mr. Irwin to come down? Mr. Randy Irwin, I saw him earlier, there he is. He's gonna give us great information about our arts program. A fine arts program, right, Randy?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for having us tonight. In the fall of 2017, there are some 5,000 students across the state of Arkansas that auditioned for all-region choirs. We're proud to say that in the Springdale School District, we had 105 students selected to our region choir, which the possibility is 260 students. So we're very proud of that, and from that group, they have to be eligible to try out for the All-State Choirs. And so I'm here to present some members of the All-State Choir. We're proud to say that we had 38 students from the Springdale School District as a part of the All-State Choir, and I'm going to let them speak to their experience. So I'll introduce my first two students are Nicole Dominguez and Ian Gilbert. They're both two-year All-Staters, and then I'm gonna let Ms. Holly introduce her students.
So I'm Nicole Dominguez, I'm actually a three-year All-Stater. Yeah, you said two. We're both three-year All-Staters. And Allstate really has, you know, singing in a choir every day, you get to work with, like, working with other people. You know, you learn how to listen, how to blend, and things like that, and Allstate actually gives you the opportunity to better yourself as an individual singer, and so it's been great throughout the years to work with Mr. Irwin and our clinicians that we've had at the three different Allstate clinics, and just work on my own musicality, my own technique and stuff like that. And I definitely think that I have grown because I've been able to participate in Allstate.
And so, like she said, I think that being able to sort of get into choir and with a director that you're not used to is a good way to just get better musically. Something else that we do is, I don't know about at Springdale, but at Harbor, we, Irwin, well, Mr. Irwin and Mr. Brown both come before and after school every day and work with us and listen to, like, us individually to help us become better, so that we can perform better in our auditions.
Thank you. Board, this is Mr. Thomas Gray and Mr. George Perez. They are both second-year All-Staters, and I've asked them to speak to you as they're, on their experience with this.
Hello. Again, I'm Thomas Gray. Allstate really allowed me to grow as a musician with the difficulty of the music, and one thing that I had not noticed until this year is how I was able to kind of network into my post-secondary education. I was able to meet some of the choir directors at the U of A and at other colleges, and I put in a good word for myself, being something I want to pursue, and I just really appreciated the opportunity to do so.
Hello, I'm George Perez, and Allstate was a very positive experience in my life, because I loved singing with our choir at school, but singing with the Allstate Choir was a new experience, because they always, there was no limits to what we could do, and it was just very fun, and it just, I enjoyed it very much. Thank you.
Do you have some questions for these guys?
I do. I'm kind of curious, is everybody a senior?
They're juniors.
I'm just curious, what will you be doing after high school? Just share with us as far as college career, what's next?
Okay, I will be at the University of Arkansas in the fall in the Honors College. I want to be a neurosurgeon, so.
Great. A good singing neurosurgeon, that's good.
I'll also be at the University of Arkansas in the Honors College, and I want to be a veterinarian.
Okay. You guys know what you're gonna do yet?
Not yet.
I want to go into music education.
There we go, they like that.
And Board, I'm also, I'm happy to report, George has also, also made the Allstate Band. So he is a two-year Allstate Band and Choir member, and unfortunately, at this event, they have to choose which one they want to do, because the events run simultaneously. So last year, George participated in the Allstate Band, and then this year, he chose to participate in choir, and then next year, we'll flip a coin and see which way it goes. I'm also happy to report that Springdale High School had one student who made the Southwest Regional American Choral Directors Association High School Honor Choir, and her name is Haley Lawson. She is a senior, she could not be here this evening, but we were very proud of her. It's a seven-state region from Texas, Kansas, Oklahoma, New Mexico, Missouri, Arkansas, and, did I say Kansas? Anyway, but it was a huge honor. There were 100 students from those seven states chosen to be in that choir, and they did a clinic and a performance in Oklahoma City at our regional ACDA conference. So we're very proud of Haley as well.
Are any of your parents here tonight?
Yes, Mr. and Ms. Gray are here. Mike and Brooke Gray.
Okay, congratulations.
Yes.
I'm also happy to present a program to you. The Camerota Singers from Harbor High School went to the Festival of Gold in Nashville, Tennessee during spring break. They received superior ratings, and we got to sing with some kids from California and from New Jersey, and as you can see, the program, they're from all over. Everyone else flew in, we drove in on a bus. But it was a great experience, and we got to sing in the Symphony Hall in downtown Nashville, Tennessee. We got to work with some world-renowned clinicians, and these two students were part of that choir, and I thought they might could answer any questions about that event also.
Did you have fun?
Something special happen in Nashville that you just maybe think about?
I mean, I think mine probably was the first time that we walked into the Shimmerhorn Symphony Center, because that's probably the nicest performance area I've ever been in, and so it was a real, like, opportunity and treat kind of to get to sing in there.
I don't think that there was any one thing that was sort of special, but sort of like the same thing with Allstate, like I said, I think getting to work with a different choir and a new director is just always a good way to sort of learn new things, because I think music is, can be very subjective, and so getting to see lots of other people's opinions and interpretations of it is good.
Well, we are very, very proud of you. Mr. Irwin, thank you for all the work that you do for your school, this entire district. Your contribution's been phenomenal.
Thank you, again, for your support and for having us tonight.
Thank you, sir. Good job. Board, I think you know this...
And then next year, we'll flip a coin and see which way it goes. I'm also happy to report that Springdale High School had one student who made the Southwest Regional American Choral Directors Association High School Honor Choir. And her name is Haley Lawson. She is a senior. She could not be here this evening, but we were very proud of her. It's a seven-state region from Texas, Kansas, Oklahoma, New Mexico, Missouri, Arkansas, and did I say Kansas? Anyway, but it was a huge honor. There were 100 students from those seven states chosen to be in that choir. And they did a clinic and a performance in Oklahoma City at our regional ACDA conference. So we're very proud of Haley as well.
Are any of your parents here tonight?
Yes, Mr. and Ms. Gray are here. Mike and Brooke Gray.
Okay, congratulations.
Yes.
I'm also happy to present a program to you. The Camerata Singers from Harbor High School went to the Festival of Gold in Nashville, Tennessee during spring break. They received superior ratings and we got to sing with some kids from California and from New Jersey. And as you can see, the program, they're from all over. Everyone else flew in, we drove in on a bus. But it was a great experience. We got to sing in the Symphony Hall in downtown Nashville, Tennessee. We got to work with some world-renowned clinicians. And these two students were part of that choir and I thought they might, could answer any questions about that event also.
Something special happen in Nashville that you just maybe think about?
Something special? I mean, I think mine probably was the first time that we walked into the Shimmerhorn Symphony Center because that's probably the nicest performance area I've ever been in. And so it was a real, like, opportunity and treat kind of to get to sing in there.
I don't think that there was any one thing that was sort of special, but sort of like the same thing with Allstate. Like I said, I think getting to work with a different choir and a new director is just always a good way to sort of learn new things because I think music is, can be very subjective. And so getting to see lots of other people's opinions and interpretations of it is good.
Well, we are very, very proud of you. Mr. Irwin, thank you for all the work that you do for your school, this entire district. Your contribution's been phenomenal.
Thank you again for your support and for having us tonight.
Thank you, sir. Good job. Board, I think you know this. Again, members of our audience may not. The Environmental and Spatial Technology Program in the district is one of our very finest academic programs. Currently, we have 16 East Programs in our district. Next year, we will have 20. And as time will allow, we hope to have an East Program in each of our schools. Mr. Jason House is our supervisor, coordinator, if you will, of the East Program. We've just been to State Conference. Mr. House, come and tell us how our kids did.
Thank you, Dr. Rollins. Thank you, board. And I did bring a team with me from Sonora Middle School representing our East Program. I'll be introducing them very shortly. So as Dr. Rollins said, we are very excited to just be getting back from East Conference and very profoundly excited about the opportunities that lay ahead as we continue to expand East throughout our district. As Dr. Rollins said, we're adding four new programs next year into four elementary schools. We're projecting nearly 2,000 students are going to be actively enrolled in East based on our current enrollment numbers. And of course, that's going to continue to grow as we expand throughout the district. And speaking as somebody who has the opportunity to work closely with East, I am personally very excited about the opportunities that presents to our students for that student-centered growth, that personalization of learning and really finding ways to connect with the community. And our students are going to speak to you a little bit about that tonight. Just a quick overview, this is, we believe, our 22nd, it's the 22nd Annual East Conference. Springdale has been present at those for the last 13 years since we founded as an East Program at Harbor High School in 2005. All of our programs are represented, over 140 students attended for Springdale. We had eight students that were there as part of the conference leadership team and those are the students that actually helped organize, worked directly with the East staff to coordinate, present at the conference. We have, for the last three years, done an annual East Conference banquet where we bring all of our participating students, facilitators, guests and administrators together for a banquet dinner. It's our third one of those and we had nearly 200 folks, about 190 folks had dinner with us that night. And it is a powerful evening of fellowship together. This year, once again, Springdale is a powerhouse and recognized for their excellence in East. Of our schools, seven were recognized with awards, a total of 16 awards shared among seven of our programs. And I'm going to invite our team to come up here and they're going to give you some details about those awards and also their experiences. We have Mr. Ratchford, our East Facilitator from Sonora, Casey Self, Annabelle Bulkeen and Juan Lemus are going to share their experiences with you.
Thank you for allowing us to come back up here once again. We were back here a few months ago to share about one of our projects, but I don't, I want to thank you for your support and continued support. We often get sidetracked by all the projects and all the fancy technology, but for me, what's special is the students behind those projects. And there, there's some amazing people that I'll never forget. We've truly become a family. Like Mr. House said, we had a great conference across Springdale. These kids are going to share a little bit about those awards, but I did want to brag on them a little bit. We came home with the Logo Competition winner. This was a special one for us. It's, we are the only school in Springdale that's ever won this award. It's, it lights up. But what this means is that it, all this logo that my students created was featured in everything that the conference did. It was the theme of the conference. So that was special, just for them to get their T-shirts and their lanyards and everything had that logo on it. So that was a special moment for my kids to get to see that. We also had, earlier in the year, we had an Exemplar Award winner. She's not here with us, but she was here to present to you last, last time. Alyssa Wilson was honored with an Exemplar Coin from the CEO of East for her work in the Vision Building and bringing East to more schools across the state. We also, from conference, we had a Difference Maker winner, Annabelle. She'll go and share a little bit about that with you. She was chosen by the Featured Keynote Speaker as a Difference Maker for conference for her presentation and her attitude towards East. And we also came home with the overall founders, or not the overall, but the Project Sophistication Innovation Award for Best Projects in Spring, or in, for all of East. So the program of excellence, and that's one we're very proud of. And I'm going to turn it over to them and let them share a little bit about East and what that experience meant to them.
That thing right there is really cool. Oh, yes.
Hi, my name is Casey Self. These awards have been, oh, thank you. These awards have been such a boost for our program. We saw it initially with the Logo Competition this year, earlier in the year. It gave us such a big confidence and a desire to be better and help so many more people. To win Project Sophistication and Innovation means so much. It's what East is all about, I mean, projects. And to know that we did that with more innovation and sophistication means that, means that we're doing something right for our community and our education. Thank you.
So during East Conference, a lot of schools from Springdale won a lot of competitions. And even though one school didn't win a competition, they were still a competition finalist. And there were seven students from our district that were recognized with the Difference Maker Coin. And one student from Central Junior High that was recognized with the Exemplar Coin. So our schools, Sonora Middle School, like Mr. Ratchford said, we won the Logo Competition and the Founder's Award for Excellence in Project Sophistication and Innovation. Sonora Elementary, the school like right next door to us, won the 3D Printed Up Contest. And the students from there that were recognized with different Maker Coins were Titan Skates and Coley Ratchford. From Shaw, the students that were recognized with different Maker Coins were Wrigley Graham and Leah Marvin. And Don Tyson, the School of Innovation, won a lot of awards. They won the Micro Control Everything Competition. They won the Multimedia Competition with their 3D Printing Tutorials. And they also won the Create a Healthier Arkansas Competition with their Schoolhouse forms. The students from there that were recognized with the Difference Maker Coins were Miguel Hernandez and Lily Miller. From Helen Tyson, they won the Dress to a T, which is the category for the team with the best overall T-shirt design. From Holston Middle School, they were the school that didn't win an award, but they were a finalist within the app competition. So the student I was talking about that won the, that was recognized with the Exemplar Coin was Bruce Lowe from Central Junior High. He, he was recognized with the Exemplar Coin because he was a prime example of an individual who wants to change, putting in time and effort to make a better future. Bruce Lowe has shown that if you want to change, you have to work for it. And George Junior High, they didn't win any conference awards, but I just want to include that about the GIS mapping. They were GIS mapping winners from last summer. And they also were the overall national and state winners. Yeah.
Okay. So I know I speak on my behalf when I say this of the whole East Conference team, at least for our school. And it's that this year's East Conference was very eye-opening. It was literally a once-in-a-lifetime experience. And honestly, it made all of us grow. We became closer and our bonds grew stronger, but we learned so much about each other. And to be honest with you, our, all of our worth ethics improved. I just want to say that the Springdale School District should definitely continue with what they're doing with the East Programs because, hey, we won a Founder's Award this year and the Logo Competition. And nearly, no, all of our schools actually were finalists. So we should definitely continue.
Do you guys have any questions for these five students?
So with your comments that you've just made, I guess you, are you going to try and go again next year?
You had such a wonderful time.
Yeah, yeah. All of you feel that way? I thought you did a wonderful job presenting. And you know what was really fun for me? I got to see Dr. Dotson's face as you spoke. And her big smile, I could just see how proud she was of you. And it was, it's very touching. I wish you could have seen her face when you were presenting. So you did a great job.
Are your parents here with you tonight? Rest of, any other parents? Thank you.
And I don't know if Mr. Ratchford mentioned this, but of course, all three of these students attended conference with us. All three represented Springdale and Sonora as presenters at conferences, speakers at conferences. And I think you can see why we selected them for that honor. So thank you very much for having the opportunity to speak with you today. Thank you for your continued support of East and we are very excited about the future.
Thank you, guys.
Board, we're on item F on the agenda. We have a number of students and programs in the career and technical area we want to acknowledge this evening. Dr. Rollins?
Yes, sir. As we have conversations about college and career-ready and then tonight on our way to innovation-ready, I think these students tonight show both. So we have quite a list of students who have been recognized for different awards, different competition winners. We are in that season. I'd like to start by inviting Carolina Santos from Harbor High School and also Dr. Brackett down. Carolina was awarded the Regional Student Career and Technical Leadership Award for Medical Professions. And for that, she receives a $1,000 scholarship to use either at Northwest Community College or at NTI.
Hello, my name is Carolina Santos and I'm very proud of myself. I am, really, because I started at Elmdale with Miss Hutton, not knowing any English. And I cried the first day I went to school. And I didn't want to stay because I didn't know the language nor the people. And then further on in my education, I, as a junior, I became a CNA. Ms. Shay Lostre from NTI helped me a lot, helped me through that and my counselors did too. And as a DACA recipient, I'm... It's very hard because even though our teachers are preparing us for our college experiences and everything, preparing us for those moments of our life that we are like independent and our, on our own, DACA like limits us. In the beginning, I wanted to be a licensed practical nurse, but due to having DACA, I can't. And so what I'm planning to do with this scholarship opportunity, I plan to go to NTI and go into the Surgical Tech Program. And I hope to better myself and, and just have a future to like, like just, just have a future different to what my parents have been through. And just, thank you.
I want to make sure that I honor the work of also Mr. Colt Dickard. He is, today he's traveling. He's part of the Diesel Technology Group competing in skills in Hot Springs City, but he was also an honorable mention winner in the agriculture category. The next list, and I'm going to ask people to come and join, both to my left and to my right, are Rising Scholar winners who've had excellent experience in their early college experience coursework through Northwest Community College. To be, to receive this honor, they had to receive at least a 3.0 GPA in their college coursework and also NTI coursework. And I'd like to start with students from Springdale High School. Fernando Araho, and as I call your name, please come down and join me. Amelia Canzarro, Alexandria Hayward, Mason Hutchins, Olivia James, Michael Peters, Leonardo Polanco, Elizabeth Rosinos, James Felix Reed and Cameron Thompson. I'll continue with now with a list of students from Harbor High School. Logan Geary, Megan Guthrie, Cade Keith, Jackson Lyle, Thomas Mims, Bellin Pineda and Parker Willis.
So Dr. Rollins, you said these are Rising Stars?
Rising Scholars, yes, sir.
Rising Scholars.
That's, they have to take at least 12 hours at NWHAC and they have to maintain a 3.0 grade.
Congratulations.
I know there's probably some parents here, that's, that's a great accomplishment. There's any parents here?
All rise.
All rise, yes.
There's a grandmother here today, too, for one.
Thank you, guys.
Ms. Perez, if I could ask you to join me for just a minute? And I'd also like to call Ms. Samantha Quintero and David Whalen from Springdale High School as we talk about efforts in becoming a STEM leader. We talk about computer coding. And these two have won in state competition, which, I'm sorry, won in regional coding competition, which has now allowed them to advance to state competition in computer coding. So please, Mr. Whalen.
Thank you. Well, I didn't actually plan on giving a speech, so I'll have to think of something up here on the spot. So the programming competition really started much earlier this year. There are several other schools that offer competitions. And our first one was actually at John Brown University. Now, we did fairly well at the John Brown University, placing second among all the high school students there and being awarded a $500 scholarship to John Brown University. Then from there, that was actually just kind of a warm-up for the regional competition, which is what was just held. And we placed well on that and moved on to state as introduced. Any questions, really?
What do you plan to do next?
Well, what I plan to do next, I plan to go to the University of Arkansas. I'm actually been admitted on a Honors College Fellowship to go there.
Wow, that's great. Good luck.
Our next recognitions are students who participated in HOSA competitions. So I'd like to introduce Ms. Mills and Dr. Hayward and students from Springdale and Harbor High School HOSA Programs.
Every year, we go to Hot Springs in March and we compete with other schools from across the state in different categories with our students. And I have a few that are not here today, but in medical terminology, we took first place. And she was... And she was not able to be here. She's actually volunteering out in a medical facility tonight. And I have my creative problem-solving team who took second place. I have a health education team who took second place. A health education team who took third place. And a research, speaking and persuasive, who took first place. And with first place, they receive a full ride scholarship to different vocational schools across the state for the full program of study.
Wow. Very, very good.
That microphone comes right off. Can they introduce themselves?
Absolutely.
My name is Clinton River. I'm a senior, and I competed in creative problem-solving along with my teammates, Fatima and Rebecca. Thank you.
Sorry. My name is Lizbeth Gomez. I competed in health education, and I'm a senior. I competed with Destiny Soltero and Sayuri Jimenez and Monday Quinn.
My name is Destiny Soltero. I'm a senior, and I competed in health education.
Hi, my name is Taylor Beatle. And I competed in a research persuasive writing and speech. And I'm a senior, and I was by myself in this, so I don't have any other teammates.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Martin, and I'm a senior. And I competed in creative problem-solving along with Clinton and Fatima.
Hello, my name is Sayuri Jimenez. I'm a senior, and I competed in health education among my team members, Liz, Gomez, and Destiny Soltero and Monday Quinn.
Hi, my name is Fatima, and I am a senior, and I competed in creative problem-solving.
Thank you. For Harbor, we have seen our HOSA program grow significantly over the last few years. And it's been a real honor and privilege to be able to watch this team from three years ago continue to grow and dominate in the HOSA areas that they've done. And I'm really proud of them as the Meds House principal. I am always pleased. So, on behalf of Ms. Lynch, Ms. Castor, and Ms. Davis, who are unable to be here tonight, I'd like to turn it over to Maggie Welsh, who will begin and share the winnings that we did along with the students that are with us tonight. Maggie?
Hi, I'm Maggie Welsh, and I'm the president of HOSA at Harbor. And not everyone could be here tonight due to scheduling conflicts, but we placed third in public service announcement, second in medical law and ethics, first place in creative problem-solving, first place in human growth and development, first place in health career display, first place in HOSABLE, second place in nutrition. And I'll let these people introduce themselves.
I'm Kylie Young, and I was with Maggie and Nicole, and we were a part of the creative problem-solving team that placed first.
Hi, I'm Gabriel Baker. I'm a sophomore, and I competed in nutrition. I wasn't a part of the creative and problem-solving, but I ended up getting a second place in nutrition.
And I'm Nicole Dominguez, and I was on the creative problem-solving team.
Do you have any questions for the HOSA teams?
I noticed all of you are seniors. What will you do next year if you got? That's going to be tough on you.
Y'all going to school, college, get it all figured out?
You do?
Give us a quick brief.
Again, my name is Clinton River, and I will be attending U of A. I'll be going to Pre-Form and double majoring in chemistry and biology, and after that, going to pharmacy school. Thank you.
I'll be going to NWHAC to do my prerequisites, and then either transfer to John Brown or the U of A and major in nursing.
I'm going to go to NWHAC and major in biology and start off as a pharmacy technician.
My name is Taylor Beatle, and I'll be going to the University of Arkansas, majoring in biology, and my bachelor's in biology, and further my education at UAMS or med school.
I'm Rebecca Martin, and I hope to go to the University of Arkansas to major in biology and hopefully go on to pharmacy school to be a pharmacist.
My name is Sayuri, and I'm going to attend NWHAC, and I want to get my basics and then go to the University of Portsmouth to major in autism.
My name is Fatima, and I will be attending the U of A and major in biology and further my education to become a chiropractor.
I'm going to John Brown University. I'm majoring in nursing and minoring in Spanish.
I'll be going to UCA, and I'm going to major in pre-med biology, hopefully go on to medical school to become a dermatologist, and I think I'm going to minor in Mandarin.
I'm actually a sophomore, but right now, I plan on going to U of A and majoring in business management and minoring in biology.
And I will be at the University of Arkansas in the Honors College. I'm also going on an Honors Fellowship, so I will be double majoring in biology and chemistry with a double minor in Spanish and Italian.
Just remember us as we get older, chiropractor, dermatologist, just don't forget about us. Good luck, everybody. That's awesome.
Thank you, board. That's quite a group.
There's no way I can follow that list of majors and minors all at the same time, so I'm going to go like this. We also had a great showing at the Arkansas State Thesbian Festival for both Springdale and Harbor High Schools. So, we'll finish tonight by introducing Ms. Linda Button from Springdale High and Mr. Tony Terrell from Harbor High School and their student accomplishments.
Good evening. My name is Tony Terrell. I'm the new troop director at Harbor High School. Our troop took 17 students, 16 of which competed at festival. And we competed in, I want to say it was 12 events that were all acting-based. And then we had one event that was technical-based. And we actually had, of our 12 events, we had four of those 12 events that got superiors. One of those superiors was considered what's called best in show. And I, while sitting here, I did the math, and I was trying to figure out how many groups were in the duet acting scene. So, we had a duet acting scene. And out of 56 different duets from all the schools in the state, we got best in show, which means we were the top of everybody, which was a great honor for our students. And he was in the duet. This is Dawson Stevens. He is our new STO representative from Harbor, which is an STO. I'm going to let him explain when I give him the mic, and I'll let her talk for her group as well. But we had, the kids had a great time, had a great experience for them. And we actually grew a lot with Springdale's kids as well. We spent a lot of time with them. And that might be a little bit understatement. They might explain it later. If you weren't aware, we ended up getting on a bus for four hours, sitting at the accident that happened on the interstate heading north on our way back from festival. We were perfectly fine, but we sat for about four hours. Had a great time, lots of singing, and they were having a fantastic time on the bus. So, we made a lot of fun out of it. But it was a great experience for the kids, a lot of growing for my students, and I hope for their students as well. But we had a lot of camaraderie that we don't normally see between the two schools, which is awesome. I love to see that growth between the two schools as well. But Dawson, I don't know how that works for us to let him talk and let them talk. But he is what's called a state thespian officer, which means he ran against 11 students total to take what are called five positions, kind of like what you guys are, the board for our school. He is essential to the board for the students that represent at the state level for our state festival. And so, this next school year, he will be representing our school district as the student officer for their board. And he gets to help plan the festival and do all the activities that go on for the next school year. But I'll let him explain more of that here in a second. So, yeah, do you want to?
Do you want him to explain?
I can, yeah, we can. Sorry, I ramble, I apologize. So, this is Dawson Stevens.
Hey, like he said, oh, that's loud. I'm Dawson Stevens, and I'm in the Harbor troop. And we recently competed, and well, I mean, I guess there really isn't much else to say. Basically, as an STO, there's five of us chosen throughout the state of Arkansas. And we meet up in June for about a week, and we plan the following year's thespian festival. And we just kind of get together and get ideas going and try to get as many opportunities for all the future thespians, and doors open as we can. And so, that's basically all it is.
Hello, I'm Linda Button. Thank you for having us. I work at Springdale High School, and I've been there many, many years. And I've seen the International Thesbian Society puts this on. It's the Arkansas State Thesbian Contest that we go to the festival. And it has grown and grown and grown. And last year, I think we had about 900 people in the state that attended this. This year, we had over 1,200 attended. So, it's becoming very highly competitive in the state of Arkansas. It's pretty amazing to me. I want to thank these kids for showing up at last minute to just give me a little bit of pride. I'm so proud of these kids. They work so hard throughout the year. They do tons of productions, and they have to do the productions before they can even have a chance to compete. And all of these kids came away with certificates of excellence. And I think what's most important, and I also want to throw this out, this is just a little brag moment, but several of the people that were here earlier today getting some awards, they're my students, too. So, the reason I bring that up is because I think the most important thing about all these students is that they learn to build confidence. They're willing to take that chance. And it is scary. It is scary when you're standing up there on a stage, just like it is right now, staring at all of you guys here. It is scary to stand on that stage and have all these people judging you and competing, and competing against all these people. But most of all, it's a festival, and they learn from each other, and there's some crazy experiences that they go through, not only through the workshops. And I'm going to let them tell you what they performed in and presented in. But also, he's right, the camaraderie when you're on a bus for 11 hours in February. It was a great time had by all. Let me introduce.
Hi, I'm Robbie Bennett, and I competed in solo monologue.
Hi, I'm Cassidy Steeman, and I also competed in solo monologue. Hi, I'm Iona Williams, and I competed in solo monologue as well as audition for EDTA scholarships.
Hi, I'm Catherine Atwater, and I competed in solo musical.
Hi, I'm Karen Urban, and I competed in duet acting.
Hi, my name is Jacob Cody, and I competed in duet acting also.
Sorry, I forgot to say one more thing. We actually have a production, a musical going on right now. It opens on the 27th and 28th. And Dawson and I have brought certificates for you guys to bring little cards. If you would like to come attend, you can take, with that card, you and a guest can get into the performance free of charge. So, please tell people about it. It's not this weekend or next week, but it's the following weekend. So, the 27th and 28th, Friday and Saturday night, 7:00 PM show. But he's got cards for you, he's going to hand out. And I also, while he's passing that out, I failed to mention, we also had a tech team that competed, and I kind of mentioned on it, but they competed against 38 schools that we had a lot, like five different events that they competed in. And our school, our Harbor, was able to rank in that. And I kind of mentioned to her the same thing. She was saying that kids that are in here, some of them are ours as well. One of the students back here, her name is Faith Echols, she's right on the second row. She was in our, one of our knot tires. She learned how to tie three, or four knots in concession. So, she had to tie all of them in a row, and she was able to tie all of them 9.89 seconds, which put her fourth overall out of everybody, which it takes me about 25 seconds to tie them all. So, she's phenomenally faster than me. And the whole tech team worked really, really hard, which put our tech team, out of 38 schools, we got ranked fifth overall out of 38 schools for our tech team as well, which is a cool experience as well for them. And so, I didn't want to leave them out because they worked really hard as well. So, thank you.
I was curious, did anybody come out of the competition with any scholarship offers? Because aren't there usually colleges there? Did anybody get an opportunity to interview for? Or, I thought you said something about it.
I did. I'll let him start, because he did receive a scholarship, even though he is a junior. So, hang on, here I go.
Yes, I received a $3,000 scholarship to SCAD University, which is in Georgia. And it's $3,000 with a chance to build on that next year if I am given the opportunity to receive any more from that school. I believe Harbor High School, we had $12,000 in scholarships awarded. And I think three students out of those were awarded with a chance to build on.
I had a callback interview with Centenary College in Louisiana. And unfortunately, I'm going to University of Arkansas, but I didn't have the opportunity.
Well, good. Now, as the STO, do you get an opportunity to decide where the festival is next year? I mean, if you can go to Perry, surely you can come to Northwest Arkansas and have the same event. Or Springdale.
Yeah, we are hosting the Junior Festival this year as well as the One Act Festival. So, three festivals in one district isn't usually something that the Thesbian Society does.
We should change that.
Yeah, I agree. I don't want to go anywhere.
You don't want to be on my bus.
We're here tonight from Shaw Elementary and some other schools that are going to be here to talk to you about how we are working to move up the staircase of excellence and jump to that top step of innovation-ready. I have with me some awesome students and amazing teachers that are going to share how we've been getting innovation-ready at Shaw.
Hello, my name is Sylvia Hernandez. I'm the Shaw East facilitator. This is our first year to have East at Shaw, and we are so excited. The kids have learned a lot. There's been a lot of growth. And we have really worked on collaborating with our GT program. We have common students. We wanted to use their time wisely.
I'm Lisa Stark, the GT teacher at Shaw. And we, I had the wonderful opportunity of going to East Training this summer. So, Sylvia and I partnered together, and that just benefited our students. I was able to get to know students that I didn't know before and then see my students in a different setting. And our relationship grew, which made it just stronger. So, I would like to thank Ms. Voss and Mr. Smithy for helping, allowing us to let that happen.
Good evening. My name is Ainsley Carter.
And my name is Wrigley Graham.
And we'd like to tell you about how our Shaw East and GT programs collaborate. So, this year, Wrigley, a few other students in our school district, and I have been working on a project called Being Good Samaritans Community Resource Mapping Project. This is where we map resources through ArcGIS and ESRI. Those are mapping softwares, like medical resources, low income housing, educational and legal, food pantries, soup kitchens, and much more. But obviously, we had to start somewhere, and our main idea was just to map out Little Free Pantries. This idea wouldn't have been inspired if it weren't for Dakota Young. She was a former GT student at Shaw who's doing Little Free Pantries as her Type III project. She took this over to Honor Society, and they built a Little Free Pantry for our school. This project has also included collecting data through Google spreadsheet.
It doesn't matter if you're in GT or East, you can always work on either project in each classroom. So, if you have an East project you want to work on in GT, you can do that or vice versa.
Hello, my name is Kim Gadberry. I'm the library media specialist at Shaw. And we have created a Wonder Lab. It's kind of like a mini museum in a school, and you've already seen that earlier this year. But Julie is going to tell you a little bit about how we extend that.
Hi, my name is Julie Paul. You all may know about Shaw's Wonder Lab. We have now extended into using STEM projects, not only in the classrooms, but also at students' homes. Our most recent STEM project is the Easter Egg Challenge. The Easter Egg Challenge is where every student at Shaw gets a plastic Easter egg, and they can use the materials that they have at their houses to create something innovative.
Okay, and I think, Wrigley, you were going to explain a little bit about your project.
My personal favorite project that we've done in the Wonder Lab is the Earthquake Table Challenge. It was where we had a square PVC pipe structure and a wooden board on it with rubber bands that attached to it to make it shake. And we used things that we had in the Wonder Lab to make a structure to see if whenever we would shake it, the things would fall off or if the thing would keep holding. things would fall off, or if the thing would keep holding together. We've taken this to our classrooms and our home, but we've used that engineering that we've learned and taken it to what we've had to do in our class and at home.
Well, the next innovative piece that we're going to showcase actually came to us from the people that visited New Zealand. They came back with this idea of trust badges and awarding our students trust badges, those students that needed, really earned the trust badges for extra privileges. And so we have made this kind of our own at Shaw, and the boys and girls are going to talk to you about that. I want to introduce to you Ms. Tara Harcourt. She is a math teacher at the, at Springdale High School, and she's also a Harding intern studying to be a principal. And it's through her leadership that we were able to extend our trust badge program and really help the kids facilitate and grow their leadership skills.
Hi, I'm Rowan Graham. So we brought this project or program into our school to show our leadership skills and student leadership skills. We first started out by finding out what our norms can be for these certain type of badges. So what we did was, we thought of how we can, how we can earn these with character words like respect and integrity, and then what our privileges might be able to be, like being an independent reader and going outside of class without supervision, and not having to wait in line to go to recess and lunch.
Hi, my name is Jace Johnston. And after that, the first two weeks, we had a problem. And that was, we had a bunch of kids with trust badges, but we weren't getting any more. So we decided to start up leadership meetings so that we could work on our relationships with our friends, so that we could make them be, follow us. Because you can't be a leader unless you are a follower. Because unless you're a follower, you can't learn anything.
Hi, my name is Josie Schuler. And in our first leadership meeting, we talked about, like defining character words that will define having a trust badge or being able to get one. And some of the words we talked about were integrity, leadership, humility, and trust.
So these are some of the four programs that we have been doing here at Shaw. And like Jace said earlier, you have to be, if you're a leader, you have to have followers coming with you. And every day you come to school, you learn more and more knowledge that you share with people, which makes everybody around you and you smarter. And how Ms. Voss, everyone like Ms. Voss can still look up to people, like how she looks up to Dr. Rollins, and the relationships that you can build to get people to follow you.
Dusty was so great to, one of our leadership meetings, he actually did a demonstration about pouring knowledge into a bucket. And if we keep all that knowledge, and we don't ever let it go or share it, then we have nothing else to add, do we? So you are always so good to share that with us. But this, these are the programs that we have. And if you have questions, I think there are cards here for you to, we would be glad to respond to your questions. And that's how we'll do the rest of the sharing. Hunt Elementary is up next, and they're going to be showcasing some great innovative practices with their music programs. So please feel free to write any questions down, and we'll be glad to get back with you. But thanks again for honoring us with a chance to share our programs with you.
Good evening. We want to take the opportunity to thank you for allowing us to show an example of innovation in our classroom. We want to start off by sharing how we cultivate creative composers in our music classroom through technology, so that we're developing students who are innovation ready. Our students are going to share with you tonight some of the ways they, some more ideas on ways they use technology to integrate learning experiences at our school. I want to introduce to you, I'm sorry, Ms. Amber Jones. She's our music teacher. And these are some of our fifth graders, Brady Clinton, Cooper Daniel, Fernanda Mojica, and Brendan Everett.
Good evening. In fifth grade, we use a lot of technology in music because we want to make great composers. And they are able to take their learning to higher levels each year, which is evidence of all the amazing resources they have. They surprise me so much by what they can learn and what they can accomplish. And just by eliminating obstacles, we didn't even know that were there by using Chromebooks and music supplement applications and all sorts of online tools. And of course, our really awesome Active Panel in our classroom. And we use this to compose. So we take all of their music education, and we bring it together. And I get to see most of that at Hunt. I love that. And we add Recorder. So I know you cannot wait to hear Recorder if you've not been blessed with that. Innovation amplifies music learning to reach the world. And we use our compositions to reach the world, so they can share those with others.
So our first song was Hot Cross Buns, and I taught my brother that, and he can't wait to play Recorder in class.
Ms. Jones says making arrangement of a familiar song is something every fifth grader needs to know. She says knowing about forms like theme and variations is also important.
Ms. Jones told us we were going to write a theme and variation. By this time, most of us had gotten pretty far in Recorder Karate, but it still sounded kind of hard to do.
To make it easier, she went back to her first song, Hot Cross Buns. We analyzed this by breaking down each part. We labeled each part of the form.
After they label the form and they break it down, they improvise and practice and put their compositions into Q Composer, which is an app on Quaver's Marvelous World of Music. There, they get to publish their music, make MP3s, and share them. And then they turn them into me on Gradebook. I pull them up, and they're able to self-assess and peer assess in the classroom, find out what they need to edit.
We were able to listen to each one in our class and see if we needed to edit the A, A, B, A form or the pitches.
So we, we got with partners, and we did, we practiced each of our variations. And we decided which one was best to perform, and then we practiced the one that we chose.
We went around the room to perform the different variations.
After our final arrangements, we chose a partner to perform with. We chose a friend that could, that could play at the same level, too.
So they're going to share with you tonight. What's great is the advanced students can take their, the skills that they have learned faster and play all those new notes and skills in their composition, where else students who are still learning with me in class are able to still compose at their level. So they'd like to share those compositions with you. So they're going to start with Hot Cross Buns. They weren't quite ready. So they wrote and published this music, and this software is just like what professionals use to compose and publish music in the real world. As a thank you, we would like, the students wanted to give you a gift of their music. Inside the piece of music, you'll find a QR code. If you try to take a photo of the QR code, a prompt will come up, and you can listen to it anytime. So you can hear all four of their different pieces. We'll leave extras QR codes for any parents that would like to listen. And Michelle Hutton is going to represent Elmdale Elementary.
Well, hello, we are Elmdale Elementary. I have my art crew here today. This is Mrs. Kat Robinson. She is a new art teacher at Elmdale, and boy, is she innovative. And you're going to find out. We have Hugo and Richard and Maya here to also represent Elmdale. They have been working on a great project all year.
Hi, I'm Kat Robinson, and it's my second year teaching, but it's my first year in Springdale. And I interned here, and I fell in love. And so I'm really glad that I'm in the district. I wanted to take advantage of the technology in Springdale, since all the students have Chromebooks and iPads. That's so awesome. And so I wanted to do a lesson I've done before, but do part of it on the Chromebooks. And so they downloaded an app called Google Drawings. And we did the first part of our project on the computer. And then I printed out their artwork, and they were able to finish it in class using materials in the classroom. So my requirements for this project was, they were creating a one-point perspective cityscape. And they just, I wanted them to use at least four buildings, create windows and roads for their city, and create some part of nature aspect. But I really wanted to leave a lot of freedom up to them. And you'll get to see their artworks here in just a minute. Here's Maya to explain the first part of our project.
The first part of our project was to download the app Google Drawings. And when we downloaded the app Google Drawings, we went to our virtual paper, should you say. And first, we had, we created a circle in the middle of the paper, and that was our vanishing point. Then we inserted shapes and drew lines from the vertices of the shapes to the vanishing point. And then after we created lines to the vanishing point, we then created parallel lines, as you can see on the picture, too. And then we had the longer lines that we needed to shorten, so it didn't look like our buildings were getting sucked into a black hole.
And Richard's going to explain the second part, and then Hugo will finish up, explain the third part.
After we were done with doing the parallel lines, we did other parallel lines that went, that looked like they were going to the vanishing point, but they ended at the end of the buildings. And to create the roads, we used the ruler. And if we wanted to do curves, then we just did it with our pencil.
After making our city, we, we colored our city with colored pencils, and we learned how to shade. And you had, you had, so you had to put your pencil or colored pencil flat. And, and we learned that if stuff are closer, it looks richer or colorful. And if it's farther, it's faded or white, and that's called atmospheric perspective.
All right. And here are their artworks, their finished artworks. Maya's on the left, Richard's is in the middle, and Hugo's is on the right. They're all completely different, and I love them. I love that they use their creativity to design their own city. They're able to name them, name the buildings if they wanted to. So I'm really proud of all the hard work that they put in. And then also, I wanted to share, we had a STEM night planned at Elmdale, and I was like, can we include the A and make it Steam Night? And so we did pendulum painting. And I'm going to have Maya read this, our objective for this.
Our objective of the pendulum painting was to understand Isaac Newton's first law of motion while visually seeing the effect of gravity on a moving object. We created pattern, patterns using a pendulum that released painting, that released paint. And we predicted how variables such as force and direction will change the look of the painting.
I also have it set up over there with some of the examples from our Steam Night. And I was going to do a little demo. I don't know if there's time, but. Okay. Hugo was there that night. Hugo, do you want to help me? Or Maya, or Richard? Any of y'all? So we're not going to do it as big scale as it was at the Steam Night, because I don't want to make a huge mess and possibly get it on the carpet. So we're doing a kind of mini version of that. Okay, I'm going to set this down. I don't want to open it too much, get paint everywhere, so. It's kind of clogged, but it's kind of working a little bit. The more that you kind of spin it, it'll do more of a kind of different pattern design. I really don't want to open it too much, because I don't want to get paint everywhere. So I'm kind of doing a little mini version. Actually, Maya, thank you. So anyway, we had a lot of different colors, but I just kind of limited it with this one, so.
And again, if you have questions, you can write them on the index cards that you have. And the next innovative educators coming up will be Central Junior High.
Dr. Rollins, members of the board, thank you for having us tonight. As you know, Central Junior High has been a pillar of excellence in Springdale for over four decades. And that doesn't happen by accident. Really, it's an innovative mindset, an innovative way of thinking that just helps us to look at not only what we're doing now, but how can we prepare our students for when they go to high school and then also college and beyond. So I'm proud tonight to introduce some of our teachers, current students and alumni from Central to just explain just a few of the ways of our innovative programs at Harbor. So first of all, we'll begin with Dana Wright, and she will describe our work in the Media Communications Lab.
Hi there. I'm Dana Wright, and I've taught in Springdale for 12, well, this is my 13th year. This is my first year at Central, and what a blessing it has been. Dr. Greep gave me the Media Communications Lab I'd never done before. And, and the students and I just kind of started looking around, decided what we could do. One of the things is, we were the first junior high in the state to do live stream of football games. And it's still a learning process, but the kids have been great with it. We want to move on next year to include basketball, if we can, and, and other events, so that parents who can attend the games can still, or even grandparents or anyone, can still. who can't attend the games can still, or even grandparents, or anyone, can still see their children participate. But before I go anymore, first, I'm gonna introduce Jamie Chancellor, she's in my media class, and she's a Computer Apps kid, and then Ellie Benson, who's also in Computer Applications.
Hi, my name's Jamie Chancellor, as you probably already know, but being in Media Communications is just so fun. I love my teacher, and I love all the students that I get to share this experience with. And I think it's just such a cool opportunity to be the only junior high in the state to have livestreamed six football games, which is a lot of football games. And also, we have uploaded 130 videos to YouTube, and most of them being daily announcements, which we video things like sporting events and pep rallies, and just so many more that I can't say off the top of my head, because I can't remember them all, but yeah.
So, Computer Applications, in there, we get certified in Microsoft programs. I am the only one at my school currently that is a master specialist, meaning I passed six different tests saying that I have mastered how to use the different programs. There are seven currently in the state, currently in the state this year, and 56 specialists last year, five of which were produced by Central Junior High, and 214 certificates were given out last year.
As you can imagine, certification in Microsoft Office is a big deal for students when they go on to the real world, and they're applying for jobs and applications in college. A lot of the universities, I know the Walton School of Business, the first thing you do is test on Excel, and if you already have your Microsoft Office certification, you don't even have to take the test, much less the not-for-credit course you would have to take if you didn't pass it. So our students are far and advanced when it comes to Computer Applications, and Microsoft Office, and media, and everything else. Jackson Alley.
Hi, so this year, I am taking a class that's a little bit different. I am taking Spanish III for native speakers as a freshman. Usually, it's not offered until the sophomore year. And so to overcome the barrier of being in the wrong school for this class, I take it over Skype every day. It's a really great opportunity. It's an immersion class, which means that everything is in Spanish, which is a great opportunity to increase my fluency and my skills. And through the class, I've had the opportunity to become an Arkansas biliterate in Spanish and German, and I'm also placed in the 99th percentile on the National Spanish Exam. And so it's really great how administrators have facilitated this for me, they've been very conducive to it, and I'm really grateful to Dr. Greep and Ms. Boards for everything they've done for me to make this possible. And so it really is a great example of personalized education, and how I'm able to make my own sort of educational path within the district.
Next, I'd like to introduce Betsy Kritsou, who has a great relationship with Crystal Bridges, and she's brought some of our students and former students. Ms. Kritsou.
Hi, how are you all? I'm excited to be here. Like Dr. Greep said, my name is Betsy Kritsou, and I am proud to be the visual arts teacher at Central Junior High. In my 10 years of teaching, I have found many tools to aid my instruction, but one tool that I consider essential to student learning is Crystal Bridges, and they're wonderful educators and staff. I have the privilege of being a member of the Educators Advisory Board for Crystal Bridges. This is a board that, it's handpicked educators of all different content areas and grades. We help design the educational tours and critical thinking activities for students visiting the exhibitions, as well as tools that teachers can use pre and post visit. We work hard connecting exhibitions to all subjects, and see the importance in teaching every subject and every child. These tours are unique, the opportunity is very unique, to deepen our students' critical thinking, as well as teaching them how to see language arts, history, math, and science through art. Alice Walton became a patron of the arts at age 10. She gave up her allowance, or she saved, she didn't give it up, she saved up her allowance to buy a reproduction print of Picasso's Blue Nude. Ms. Walton said that Crystal Bridges is something that we desperately needed, and recognizes what a difference it would have made in her own life if it had been around when she was growing up. Crystal Bridges is free. It's a free vital tool that I use in my classroom and embed into many of my lessons. It helps me provide the best instruction possible, as well as a memorable experience. The grant opportunities that any teacher can apply for are priceless, and also allow for the teachers to know their students in a different setting. Deeper learning, deeper meaning, and advocating for what you want in life and what you believe, these are all things that I show my students at Crystal Bridges. We become storytellers and art historians. We learn how to interact with each other, as well as the community, all in a museum setting. And this helps them become better, well-rounded people. These students are our future. Through Crystal Bridges and my principal's support, I am proud of the many, many opportunities my students have had, and the experiences that I've been able to give them. Every educator should be given the opportunity and the tools to make their instruction positive, meaningful, and unforgettable. I've brought a few of my students with me from my past years, and I just want them to be able to say a few words to you about kind of my program.
Hi, my name is Tara Piazza, and I am a senior Harvard High School student. As you know, I'm a past student of hers. I truly believe that Ms. Kritsou goes beyond just being a teacher. She puts passion into everything that she does, and she makes sure no student is left behind. One of the ways that she goes beyond for her students is by taking them to Crystal Bridges. Crystal Bridges exposes students to different artists like Georgia O'Keeffe and different eras of art, like early American art. By going to see these exhibitions, sculptures, and pieces of artwork, it shows us, students, that there are careers and opportunities for us outside of high school. When we were at, when we weren't at Crystal Bridges and back in the classroom, Ms. Kritsou taught me many life lessons, some were as simple as not running with scissors in your hands, and there is no right or wrong way to do art. But the most important lessons I've ever learned from her is that no matter what you are doing, do it with passion, and no matter who you are with, always treat them with kindness. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Faith Echols. I'm also a past student of Ms. Betsy Kritsou, and she is like a mom to me. And one of the best things that she was able to do for me was to take me to Crystal Bridges. And as an art person who's always loved arts, to be able to see these arts in person is so much more different than 2D in an image or in a book. I was able to really see the texture of the art pieces, and be able to kind of understand the fluidity and the movement of these art pieces. And I'm able to kind of recognize certain techniques that I wasn't able to really see, you know, on a picture, or through my phone, or on my computer. And so being able to go and in person, be able to see these art pieces is very, very influential and kind of inspirational for me as an artist. And not only did we get to go and see these art pieces in person, but we were also given just our own free time at Crystal Bridges to go and do our own nature walks, and kind of sit down and draw what we wanted to draw, as opposed to looking at kind of something in the classroom and having to draw, that we were able to see beautiful nature that surrounds Crystal Bridges, and it kind of helped me build my, I guess, my technique and everything as a person, just to be able to have 3D learning. I feel like it's very important for arts to understand it beyond like a 2D level. And so being able to go to Crystal Bridges and just see the art in my own skin in person is very, very important, I believe, for all art classes, so thank you for your time.
Oh, hey, I'm Ikai Sanders, but everybody calls me Chop, I think most of y'all know that. Ms. Kay is like a mom to me, like she said. Like, she makes like the classroom just feel like a big family, and I just really appreciate it for that. I would say like art, but besides football and like all my sports, I would say like that's a big part of my life, and like it really like shows like how I express myself. And like, 'cause like I'm not really a talker or anything, but like art, like you could just see it and like, you can feel what that person's feeling in a way. And like, now I go to Crystal Bridges like on my own, because I feel like more comfortable just going there, knowing what I'm talking about, because Ms. Kay still trips and all that. Thank you.
I'm Ashley Strickland, I'm a sophomore, I was a former student of Ms. Kritsou, and she truly does go above and beyond as a teacher. She takes time to get to know each and every student, and learns all of their strengths and weaknesses, and provides us advice to grow as an artist and as a person. And it's clear to see her passion for art in the classroom, and going to Crystal Bridges like really shows that, and allows us to experience things and see different like mediums that we wouldn't be able to in the classroom firsthand. And we're also able to meet artists themselves. Adana Kerr was the artist of that piece that's showing on there, and she actually came to Crystal Bridges all the way from California, and I got to talk to her, and seeing Adana like a normal person who started out like drawing in her garage, now in Crystal Bridges, truly inspiring, and like made me want to work harder in my art, and realize, and made me realize that there were so many opportunities like in the art world, and just to work on my technique. And through Crystal Bridges, you get to see each artist's individual styles and each individual technique, and the tools that they use to make their art, and how they individually put their voice into whatever they make, and it's truly inspiring, and it's made me grow a lot. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce to you tonight Ms. Amy Harrison and two of our students. Ms. Harrison is the coordinator of our virtual school, Don Tyson School of Innovation. So she'd like to share with you, we also have a student that's gonna speak to you virtually tonight, so I'd like her to share with you our innovative practices in reaching all of our students from Springdale and beyond.
Thank you for having us. So first off, I wanted just to showcase our numbers and brag a little bit on what we've done in the past year. So our course has increased by 170%, 175% from our 2016-17 enrollment. You can see that these numbers are a combination of students that are across the district, our summer school numbers, and then our School of Innovation students that are 100% virtual. You can also see that the number of students served has grown by about 90% from 2016-17. The way that the trends are going with our marketing campaign look to be growing as much for the 18-19 school years. That's exciting. Speaking of our marketing campaign, Trent, Amanda, Dustin, Seth, and Rick have done a phenomenal job in getting our message and our program out to northwest Arkansas and the state of Arkansas through social media and commercials. And we wanna showcase one of their commercials, Stella Rota, she is a eighth grade student who was homeschooled for several years.
We started homeschooling about, well, three years ago. Right now, there's so much available in terms of homeschooling that it's a little bit overwhelming.
So I started homeschooling in the fifth grade, and we were doing club soccer, so we were traveling.
I first became interested in the Don Tyson School of Innovation, just what they were doing, and was fascinated by their approach. So I went and studied their website and saw that they had a virtual school.
It's really flexible, it enables me to do all sorts of different things. And then also being able to contact teachers if I have questions that my parents can't deal with.
She really loves science, and she was moving so fast that they were able to actually move her up a grade. But then her math, she was kinda struggling with that a little bit, so we were able to try and tweak the program to fit where her needs were.
I'd love to go and play college soccer. I'd love to go as high up as I can in the soccer world, but I think ultimately, I'd love to work for NASA, either as an astronomer, or as some kind of engineer to help colonize different planets.
So both Stella and her sister that you saw in the video are planning to come to School of Innovation next year. They're going to be a blended student, so that means they're going to take some of their classes on campus, and then they will take some of their classes virtually. Nick is also a blended student, and he's gonna talk about his experience.
Hi, I'm Nicholas Buckles. I'm taking online geometry, so that next year, I'll be able to take physics and algebra blend, and then calculus and advanced AP calculus, all this so that I can be an engineer when I get older. I like this because I get to work at my own pace. If I have problems, I can slow down. If I'm at an easy point, I can just zip right along. And it's really good because I'm self-motivated. It taught me time management, which is a very useful skill. And even though it's digital, I did have support from the actual online teacher and my algebra teacher, so.
I'll introduce you, Lilly. This is Lilly Dixon, and she is a 10th grade full-time virtual student, so she's gonna talk about her experiences.
Hi, I'm Lilly, and I've done a virtual for almost a semester now, and I like it, you know, how he was explaining, you do get to do it at your own pace, and it is very flexible, especially for someone my age who has to schedule their own appointments and work, and if you're sick, you are still able to work from home or other places. And I'm able to take care of other children that I watch, and still do my work at any time that I can, in any place as well. And there is very easy access at the school to getting tutored for certain classes, but it is very personalized. It is very your own schedule, you plan it yourself, a lot of self-discipline, and it's for my own path, and it focuses directly on me, not just a class as a whole, and I get a lot of attention and a lot of focus just on my own path.
So we've left some of our marketing materials at your station, and we'd be happy to answer any questions if you wanna write them down on a card and pass them in. Thank you.
Thank you all. That was really outstanding. It just kinda helped us all get a little clearer picture. Mr. Oldby was asking those kind of questions today, and it just helps us to understand where our kids can go with this new approach. So thank you very much.
So I missed my opportunity, everybody left, to tell them how good a job they did.
I know, I don't know what happened. Write it on your card, yeah.
I must thank everybody for a great job. But those who are still here, that was a great job. Thank you.
Okay, board, I have three items for you tonight. The first is out-of-district transfers that you see every month. This month, we have four students that want to be transferred into Springdale. Two of those students from West Fork, one from Huntsville, and one from Fayetteville. These four are actually already Springdale students that moved recently and wanna stay with us. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I would ask that you approve these transfers.
Motion for Mr. Dotson, second for Mrs. Cook to approve the transfers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Post.
Okay, the second item is an update on the fiscal session, which when we met last month, the fiscal portion had just wrapped up. And the legislature did appropriate the expected funding amount for public education, which was about a 1% increase. What was still pending last month was the special session, which I believe finished a day or two after our meeting. And we spoke at length last time about a bill that would extend the 529 tax deductions that are currently available for higher education tuition and expenses down to K-12 expenses. It's an extension of President Trump's federal tax plan that the legislators in Arkansas were, were and did move down to the state level. There are still questions about what this really means. The legislation, the federal legislation uses the term K-12 public and private school tuition. And that's it. It doesn't talk about expenses in there as it does in the higher ed expenses. So when I read that, that means private school tuition because there is no tuition for a public school. A lot of our legislators communicated that they believe when the federal rules and regs are all ironed out, that there will be an extension where public school families can use that for expenses. We'll just have to wait and see. Dr. Rollins asked a good question on Monday morning when we were talking about this. And he said, well, what if it doesn't? And now, you know, the legislators have said that it was going to be of some benefit to public school families. And the answer is, well, it's already out there and it will benefit private school families. So we'll continue to watch what happens at the federal level as they define what that means. Every time an education bill is filed, the legislature looks at a fiscal impact statement. The fiscal impact statement on this bill was estimated to be $5.2 million to state revenue. They came up with that amount by saying if every private school student maxed out that tax deduction. And so they came about it that way and came up with $5.2 million. The interesting piece of that is in their fiscal impact statement, they don't consider if public school families take advantage of it. So that's, that's where we are now. The bill did pass. And we'll continue to watch what those rules and regulations look like and whether it would be an extension that public school families could take advantage of to pay for computers, tutoring, any kind of expense that they have there. Are there any questions about that? Everybody voted for it. Yes. Okay, if there are no other questions, I'll move on to my third item, which is an update on the upcoming school election. You'll see in your materials that there's a detailed polling place item that shows all of the polling locations for Washington County. Early voting will begin on May 7. And you'll see in your materials that different sites have different hours. Some are open on Saturday, some are not. You'll be able, if you live in Washington County and are registered to vote, you'll be able to vote at any of those locations. There's also a list of sites that will be open on Election Day. And again, if you're a registered voter in Washington County, you'll be able to vote at any of those sites. You don't have to go to your zone. I don't have the corresponding information yet for Benton County. They're working on it. And once I get that, I'll send it to you so that you'll have all of that information too. I contacted their election commission last week and they said, we're working on it. Give us a little bit more time. Yes, I know that. So we'll get that out as soon as we can. And they, the election commission for each county published this in the newspaper. So you'll see that in the next few weeks that all of this information will be published. So hopefully, everybody will know where and when to vote. Are there any questions about the election? Okay, thank you very much.
These are always very special days. I hope you enjoyed the opportunity we had to visit today about planning initiatives for the district, et cetera. I always like to give the board an opportunity to comment on our school board administrator work session days. As you know, so I'm sharing this with the audience, we started around noon today, finished just before tonight's meeting. And again, I want to thank each of you for your help, Mr. President. These are great days for us. Any comments by, certainly by yourself or members of the board about our work session today?
No, I mean, obviously, I want to reiterate the fact of the, to appreciate the time and effort for the, what I would consider very meaningful information presented by each one of your team members today.
That's right.
Very pertinent, important, and timely. And talking about school safety and future schools and innovation and technology and our accountability and assessment. I was completely impressed with our information sharing today. I thought we had some good, heartfelt, honest, open discussion today, which I was really appreciative of. I would hope everyone else was as well. Don't let me do all the talking, but it was a great, great meeting.
Well, I always want to thank you for the contributions that you make because you let us know if we're moving in the right direction or if there are gaps that we need to consider. So thank you for that. I want to ask Dr. Cleveland to come up and join me. Randy, we'll start with you. I know you represent our district at the National School Board Association. Any comments you'd have? And I know Jared attended as well, so I'll look forward to his comments.
It was a good conference as always. Obviously, I wished everybody had been able to make it, but I know we're all busy. But I went to several breakout sessions. In fact, I've already sent an email to all the board members and the administrative staff and a few of the principals that I knew right off the top of my head. From, my favorite one every year is called Google-icious. And it's a guy that, he's kind of an expert on technology and especially Google and different things in and around Google. And I find it helpful, really more for my business than my business outside of school board than anything else. So I've been there five or six years in a row now. And he always gives out about a 15 to 20 page cheat sheet of all the things he's talked about. And I forwarded that to everybody. So hopefully, everybody can find a nugget or two in there to use. Went to a couple of other breakout sessions that were really good. One talked about what's going on from a federal perspective with, with education, what representative, how many representatives are up for reelection and all the, all the numbers and all the minutia that goes into that. But it was, it was good. We had some, some good meals, got to meet some, some new, new folks. Went out with a couple people we haven't gone out with before. So it's, it was good all the time, good time to get away. And got to meet with some folks from the, from the South and got to talk to them. And just, it's a good time to share ideas with other people that do what you do.
Well, I enjoyed the vendor portion of it, the vendor fair. Went and looked at all of the school buses. And that's where I got the social sentinel information that I got to pass forward with you today. Also, my main focus was on social and emotional learning. Dr. Slocum talked today about how important social and emotional learning is and how all aspects of a child's life impacts their education. And there were several opportunities to discuss social and emotional learning there as well from a board perspective. And of course, whenever I go places, and we all go places, we look at it from the administrator, teacher perspective. Well, a board could be different, right? So it's different. It's more holistic. It's more engaging. It may not be in the weeds as much as what we might do. But my responsibility, I think, is to, is to try to bring those opportunities back, those, what'd you call them, nuggets? Nuggets back. So I enjoyed getting to go and getting to spend some time with Mr. Hudson was very enjoyable. He and his wife are great people. We're fortunate to have him on the board.
Thank you for bringing your coat, by the way. My wife was very appreciative because we went down there, thinking it was going to be 80 degrees the whole time. And it was, it barely got out of the 50s.
Yeah, it really did. It was cool. Anyway, I had a great time with them and certainly had a great opportunity to learn. Thank you for allowing me to go, Dr. Rollins.
I had an opportunity to share with Kevin this morning that our Forward Arkansas Initiative is coming forward. We were going to talk about that a little bit today. Time got in front of us. So I'll be, I'll be sending you some information about the next step with Forward Arkansas. But in May, and I'll get you the date and time and so forth, we'll be bringing, trying to bring the community together to talk about how to improve our schools. Forward Arkansas has been an excellent partner already. And we're seeing them come forward and help us with partnerships, with continuing support for very important programs in our school. And so this is a great idea. Kathy, you remember years ago, we did the study circles? And that was, at that time, was an ASBA sponsored initiative. And of course, at that time, Dr. Morledge was on the ASBA staff. So she's a wonderful facilitator to help bring all that together. So that could have been on our agenda today, but I'll get that to you in writing in ample time for us all to participate. Thank you for a great day and very proud of the report you gave in regard to NSBA. That's super. All right. Dr. Cleveland, you want to come back?
Let's take three minutes to powder our noses and we'll be right back. Well, it sounded like a Miller Lite, didn't it?
I don't know that I can drink my own beers for 16 straight days.
Sharp point got into my finger. It didn't bleed at all today. No, I don't know. I did something here. I don't have any idea what. Yeah, that's exactly what I think I might have mixed.
No, I'm afraid it was much more than that. I couldn't remember when they were good.
Little boy or girl?
They didn't really know.
See if it's a girl, then that's no problem. If it's a boy, it might be a little...
Dr. Cleveland, if you're ready, let's begin.
Yes, sir. Okay, we, we talked a lot today about facilities. We had a great discussion on SOI. So if it's okay with Dr. Rollins and the board, go to number two. Is that what you want?
Do what now?
Do we go to number two?
Yeah, if the board's comfortable with that, that's great.
Does that, do you have any questions to make? All right. On number two, seek board approval for recommended contract renewals for certified personnel for 18-19. As you know, this is customary every year for rollover employees. We put out a survey and requested our employees who would like to return, who wouldn't like to return. I've been processing those, those retirements and wish not to come back opportunities. And so we're doing that now. But as customary, if you will go to page 97, there's a resolution I would request that the board approve for Dr. Rollins to not only recommend contract renewals, but also allow him, it says, number two, the superintendent requests permission to hire additional certified and classified personnel as needed for the 18-19 school year. This is customary resolution. Thank you, sir.
Do we have a motion?
Danny.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Dotson, a second by Mrs. Cook to accept the personnel, what do we want to call it here?
Resolution.
Resolution for 2018, 2019, and also the hiring for the same time period. All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Board. Next is our social worker salary schedule. We can't pay our social workers if we don't have a salary schedule that's been approved by the school board. So Dr. Rollins has requested that I put the salary schedule before the board. It's been vetted. It's gone through a series of, of requests and conversations led by Dr. Slocum. So thank you, Dr. Slocum, for pulling this information together. She and her team have done a remarkable job. Yes, sir?
Run, run the numbers by us again. How many?
Six.
To start.
To start, yes. Six to start. With zero years of experience, bachelor's level social worker would earn $40,000 on a 217-day contract. So that is, it's a good salary, not overly over the top. It's right in the range of what social workers should be paid. over the top. It's right in the range of what social workers earn in the marketplace. If you're a master degree social worker, a year at 20, with... On a 217-day contract, you would earn $53,000. It's in your booklet on page 142. So we believe the salary schedule is in good shape.
We already targeted those six people? You already have?
Yes. They haven't started yet.
Okay.
They'll start, I believe, Dr. Slocum said, on the 16th, or some of them will.
So they accepted a job on faith, they would get paid?
Yes. Yes, sir.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Mr. Dotson and a second by Mr. Hutchinson to approve the proposed salary schedule for the social worker pilot program. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Very grateful. Thank you. And finally, the food service department would like to have a food service program, summer meal program, as we do customarily. This year, we would like to do it in coordination with the Department of Human Services. In order to do that, we have to request from the board permission to do so. So this year, the schools that we plan to have meal service programs for will be Bayory, Childers Knapp, Elmdale, George Elementary, Jones Elementary, Parson Hills, and Springdale High School. Part of the reason for going DHS instead of the regular ADE program is the reimbursement rate is higher. It's not that we make money on this. It just helps us cover us and make sure the food service program is quality. So that's our request. So if the board would consider...
So May 30, you can go have lunch at one of these schools. May 30 through the...
That's when the program...
Fourth of August.
Yes, sir.
That's a great program.
That's when...
Have we done it at Springdale High School before?
I believe so. It may have been in the past, but Dr. Rollins will probably tell us before me, have we done a food service program at Springdale? I believe we have in conjunction with...
Yes, we have, yeah.
With summer school.
That's great.
And I really like this program. I think it's great to serve young people who need that support throughout the summer, so...
Absolutely.
What we're working to do, and I've said this to some of you as we spoke individually, we want to have a learning experience around each of those meal functions. And the principals and staff are doing really nice work to make that happen, so...
Yes, sir. Needs to be in the minutes.
Mr. President, if you're ready, I'll make a motion that we move forward with the child nutrition food service program for the summer of 2018.
A motion by Mr. Luttrell and a second by Mr. Dotson to approve the school lunch program for the summer of 2018. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much. Thank you for a great day.
Thanks, Dr. Cleveland. Mr. Hayes?
Good evening, board. Dr. Rollins, this evening I have three items for you. The first item is the building projects financial update that I present each and every month. Not much change going on. We're nearing the end of each of these three projects, and at the end, the payouts tend to slow as they're finishing up final touches, going through their checklist. So not much changed there over last month. Any questions on that one? All right. The next item that I have for this evening, tonight we have with us Sarah Gentry. Sarah is a principal with Hudson Sisney. Hudson Sisney does our annual audit, and she had completed that work, and she's going to bring you a report on the year ended June 30, 2017.
Good evening.
Good day.
I'd first like to take the opportunity to say how much we appreciate the opportunity you give us each year to perform the audit of the school district. We'd also like to thank all the accounting staff who helped us. We ask a lot of questions and ask for a lot of information, so we really appreciate all their help, and they were very cooperative in giving us the information. So we'd especially like to thank Mr. Kelly Hayes and Dr. Rollins for their help throughout the process. They probably take the brunt of it. So just in general, an overview of the audit process, we... Our responsibility in relation to those financial statements is to opine on the balances of those numbers in the financial statements as of June 30, 2017. And our opinion is on pages one through three of those financial statements. And as you can see, there was an unmodified or a clean opinion issued on the regulatory basis of accounting, which is the basis that the district is reporting under, which is approved by ADE. Because the district reports on the regulatory basis, there's an adverse opinion issue on GAAP basis financial statements because it's a completely different basis of accounting. On page four, the balance sheet, the regulatory basis of accounting requires it to report under the fund accounting, fund basis of accounting. So you'll see in call and format the different funds of the district. The general fund consists of the operating funds of the school district and restricted state funds. The special revenue funds consist of the federal programs and food service fund. The other governmental funds consist of capital projects and debt service funds. And then the fiduciary funds consist of the funds the district is holding in a merely agency capacity, such as your band boosters or your other school clubs. If you drop down, the fund balances at year end are presented kind of at the bottom of the balance sheet. The general fund had a $21.4 million fund balance at the end of the year. Approximately $2.4 million of that is restricted for future state program use, and the remaining $19 million is unassigned. The special revenue fund had a fund balance of $10.2 million at the end of the year. The entire balance is restricted for future federal program use. And then the other governmental fund had a $40.8 million fund balance, of which $40.3 is assigned for future capital projects of the district, and $560,000 is related to the sinking funds and is restricted for future debt service payments. The next schedule in the packet is a statement of revenue expenditures and changes in fund balance. It's on page five. It's also in fund basis of accounting reporting. So the general fund experienced a net increase in the fund balance of $866,000. The total revenues were $194 million, mostly attributable to your property taxes and the state revenues that you receive. Both property tax revenues and the state revenues increased this year due to slight growth in the community and student numbers. And also, the state funding per student went up slightly this year. The total revenue increased in the current year approximately $9 million from the prior year. The total expenditures were $174 million, which was approximately $6.6 million higher than the prior year, but this was mostly due to increase in staffing because of your student growth and then increase in salaries, just your normal salaries, and then your capital expenditures this year with your growth in the elementary schools and some of these buildings that you've been building. On the fund basis of accounting, that all gets expensed. It doesn't get capitalized as an asset. Special revenue funds experienced a net increase in their fund balance of $1.5 million. The majority of that increase relates to the advances received on the Race to the Top grant program, close to year end, that hadn't yet been expensed or used in the current year. The other governmental funds experienced a net increase in the fund balance of $5.3 million. This increase is the net effect of transfers from the general fund and also scheduled repayments of your debt, your bonds, your principal and interest, and then your significant capital outlays in the current year. On page six, you'll see a statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, budget to actual, presented for your general fund and your special revenue funds. The general fund experienced a net favorable variance of $2.5 million from budget. State revenues, as mentioned earlier, were slightly higher than expected due to the per-student funding increase plus a slight increase in student growth. The district also really watched costs this year, as you can see. So some of the biggest contributors were the general supplies were lower than expected, and then certified sub-costs were lower than expected, so those were all good things. Because of the positive increase in expected revenues and the decrease in expected cost, the district transferred more over to capital projects funds for future capital outlays. The special revenues funds experienced a net favorable variance from budget of $1.2 million. Federal revenues were lower than budgeted. However, the district also closely monitored those program costs, of which some were then covered by state funding, so... Starting on page seven are the footnotes to the financial statements, which give a lot of good information about the numbers. It kind of gives you a more detailed look at those balances. We won't go through each one of them. They remain consistent with the prior year's presentation. We do like to point out the commitments footnote, number five, on page 11. Starting on page 11, this footnote outlines the district's future commitments, both the construction commitments that were already under contract and the required future bond payments. So the construction commitments at the end of the year were approximately $5.7 million, inconsistent mostly of the Walker Elementary Media Center, the Tyson Elementary Media Center, and the Springdale High School Athletic Facility at year end that were already committed. And the remaining outstanding principal balance on the bonds at year end was approximately $183 million. The remaining reports in the supplemental information are all the required compliance reports, whether they're required from the federal government or the state government. There were no findings that were required to be communicated in those reports in the current year. You'll notice on page 20 and 21 is your schedule of expenditures of federal awards, which shows what the district expended in federal programs this year, federal monies. The district approximately spent $32.4 million in federal funds. The programs, through a process of determination that's dictated by the uniform guidance, we have to pick certain programs to test each year. And the two major programs that were selected for testing in the current year were Title VI Special Education and the Race for the Top, and there were no reportable findings in those samples selected. That's it for the report side. We also issued a SAS 114 letter, which we call, it's just a letter with governance, and it's basically a reporting requirement that we're supposed to say, there's an audit that was performed in accordance with auditing standards and the uniform guidance, that we had no disagreements with management. And the audit was performed without any major pitches, so that's it. Do you guys have any questions?
So when was this completed?
We completed it... Well, we completed field work. We were a little bit later this year, right, Kelly? Like, at the end, towards the end of this calendar year was when we were out for field work, and then we have some in-office time that we have to wrap up.
So you came up special tonight to report on this to us?
Yes.
Thank you for coming up and doing that.
You're welcome. That's no trouble.
Meaningful information.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate it.
I think it'd be great if they did. That's always...
Kelly, do you want to get notified in the mail about this audit?
You... I believe you get notified when it is to be presented to the legislative committee.
We got that this week. I had no one know yet, but that's what I got.
If you're comfortable approving the report, I think that would be great, if you could do that.
I'll make a motion. We accept the audit report as presented.
A motion by Mr. Luttrell, a second by Mrs. Cook to accept the audit findings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Great.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate it very much. Board, the final item that I have for you this evening are the monthly financials for the month of March. You can see the information in front of you. On the revenue reports, you can see that our, once again, our revenue is slightly ahead of where we were this time last year. That is mainly attributable to the fact that we're, our state foundation funding, we're getting it a little earlier this year than we did last year because we're getting 12 installments instead of 11 installments. Remember, I told you I was going to tell you that all year, so that has not changed. It's still the same situation. So we're looking good on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, you can see that we're right in line with where we were this time last year. So just going to run all the way to the finish line and have a good year.
Motion by Mrs. Cook and a second by Mr. Hutchinson to accept the monthly financials as stated. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Kelly, I wanted to tell you, show us that before she finished. We have a big budget, a lot moving forward, so that's really great with you and your team on the success of that. I mean, there were really no significant findings at all, so it's a very good job. And also, I've kind of slipped in my duties in asking you what I think are trick questions on the check register, so all, just be prepared, because you usually have an answer for me.
I appreciate it.
So just kind of prepare yourself.
I got it. I got it. Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Mr. President, I know we have our SEA rep this evening. Please come forward and talk to us. Good to see you.
You all too. It's great to be here with you all. SEA has been busy planning our upcoming event that I'm so excited to share with you all tonight. After the Stoneman Douglas shootings, I found myself obviously very concerned and moved and emotional, but flipped through channels and life went on. And I started asking myself, how and why, as a society, has this become our norm? I flipped the channels, I moved on, and that was it. And so I partnered, I reached out to the Fayetteville Education Association president, and she and I started talking, and then we started having conversations with our other, our members in both of our organizations, and we decided that we're the teachers, and we need to get together to form some kind of an event to make others aware of the problems that we're having with school safety. So we, SEA, has partnered with FEA, and we are bringing together educators, students, parents, and community members on April 20 from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. at the Fayetteville High School Performing Arts Center to have a panel discussion on school safety, mental health, teaching diverse perspectives, and, most importantly to me, the need to fund public schools. I don't feel like there's any one solution to making our schools a safer place. I feel like it's a combination of all of those things, and without funding for public education, which just seems to be getting cut and neglected, none of the other items really matter because we won't have the funds for them. And I feel that that's something that's very important to make members of our community aware of. So we will have students speaking from Springdale and Fayetteville, and teachers, counselors, principals, who are going to talk about the impact that the violence across the nation has on them in schools. Counselors are speaking on the mental health facet. State Board of Education members are speaking on funding for public education. And Representative Greg Letting is going to wrap up on the next steps, in which we'll have postcards so that the people who are there are armed with some things that they can do to have an impact on that funding for public education. To me, that is so important, and I want everyone to be aware of that. So I hope that you all can come and put it in your calendars, so thank you all.
What was the date again?
It's April 20 from 5:30 to 7:00. Well, thank you all very much for having me.
Thank you, Kevin. That's it.
7:28. 7:28 is check your time.
Great job. I think he's been working on it for weeks.
Was it at 5:00 or 5:30?
Yeah, me too. Thanks for being here, guys.
Good to be here. Good day.
Good to see you soon.
Can you send me our school calendar for next year? I meant to tear that out of my phone when we voted on it, but I did. Did you send this one? Yeah, we did, didn't we? The school calendar for next year?
That was last month.
Good job.
I think it was last month.
She did last month. I was very proud of her. That's great. Good job, kiddo.